On Tuesday, November 12th, two thousand and twenty-four, I called this work meeting of the Belton County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I'll accept a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five for the purposes of discussing a labor matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are in closed session.
After motion to end the closed session and return to the open meeting.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? We are back an open session. Do we have any new employees to introduce? Nicholas? And are you from a local family?
Yes.
Thought it sounded familiar. And did you just start? Sometimes we get people that start and we don't get to see them for a year or so. Congratulations and thanks for coming to work for Beltrami County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any future work meeting topics that they want to bring up? All right, then with that, Jody, can you give us a general election review? I think so.
Since we went a little long in the last meeting, I'll try to go through this quickly. If you would like a copy of this PowerPoint, either we sell to you or Diana and we'll go through a copy of it. So just a quick summary. This is part of our canvassing that we go through when we canvass the region. We tie up our baseline of where, what our registered voters were prior to the election. So at 7:00 AM, we had 29,267 registered voters in Beltrami County. On Election Day, or if someone voted absentee prior to Election Day, we had 3,227 registrations during voting. So they registered and voted at a given time. Of all of the ballots that were cast, 9,201 of those were either absentee or mail ballot precincts. Mail ballot precincts, I believe, around 2,500. So that puts us at a very high absentee turnout. I'll talk about that voter turnout a little bit later. The bottom line, the total number of people voting in this election was 25,043, which amounts to an overall voter turnout of 77% for those. On this spreadsheet, and this was, this are some of the stats that I was talking about. If you'd like a copy of these, just let us know in Diana. Left-hand side is our regular precincts. So these precincts actually have a poll site on Election Day. Right-hand side are the mail ballot precincts. And those precincts, each registered voter in that precinct gets a ballot mailed to them. And I believe it was about October 10th, somewhere in there. Typically, voter turnout is usually a little bit higher in those precincts. And if you look at the bottom line, 84% in the mail ballot precinct compared to 76% in the election precinct. I'll talk a little bit about absentee. There were some state law changes that increased absentee hours that we should be collecting. I will mention three of those locations. One out of all 100. Yeah, but the very bottom line on the right-hand side is 79,267. Of 36,000. I'm happening with. As I started kind of going.
Jody, wasn't it like closer to 50/50 on the 2020 because of COVID?
Yep, it was.
So, it did come down some.
It did come down, but I expected it to go down too. Well, 15% for higher COVID than it. But that was what I. I was challenged. I was thinking of. Cars are machine up. The first person. Their ballot. Ballot in the machine sometimes didn't recognize. Ballot. Because they're very precise. So. Our machine down. Oh no. With that. All the voters. That's different. How it's back into the. That was done. I after vote, I thought, oh, they were back up and running. That machine did not, because. And. Back-up drive failed. So, those driving hands had to be very complex. They have a way to, um.
Were these older machines or newer machines, or?
Some sites that are, that are newer.
Yeah. So, did you have to hand count for each race here, or were you able to use a machine here? Okay, great.
I. Got. I've got the absentee. What can you get? All very early. That's something wonderful. It says new. Oh, because I. No wonder. Halfway down the page on. The whole page down at the bottom, it says, "Born in November 24th, January 1st." Your ballot was printed. At the bottom, it says they have to take through. We have Marl. On the top of the. I'm giving the, of the statement. I think I've seen. Upward. I'm pretty. That was my quick run-through of the election. If you have any questions, or if you want to reach out to either Diana or I, we can.
Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Jody, just want to say thank you to your team and all your election judges for the job they have done during this election. It's great to know that, you know, there's, you know, folks out there that are, that are willing and committed to step, stepping forward even in a time of, uh, short notice. It's good to see that people are coming forward, so thank you.
Joe? Yeah, I was just wondering, uh, was the election staff compensated for those extra hours? I know maybe some of them, most of them are salaried, so. Or any comp time offered, I wonder if that's something we can do?
That's in my office, our salary, or our hourly employee. Election Day was a 6:00 AM start, around the clock, 2:00, 2:30ish, quarter AM the next morning. They were hourly employees, they do receive overtime for those hours included.
I mean, for the, uh, the Saturday and Sundays leading up to the election?
Overtime basis.
So, those are hourly employees that were worked, so they were paid for them? I suspect you didn't get overtime pay, though. So, thank you. Well, that's what I was wondering, I mean, there, there's at least two or three salary employees that were helping out with those extra hours, so I, I'm wondering if there's anything we can do for that.
Well, do you, do you take comp time? So, then. Okay.
Open to look at options for that.
So, honestly, um, you know, thank you for the donuts, thank you for the ice cream, thank you for the, thank you, that, that means a lot. Our customers.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jody. Appreciate it.
Getting the results by 2:30, made for a long night.
Dave and Gary, would you want to come up and give us a broadband report?
Good to be back, I was here with a monkey. Before I start, to get your thank you. For the last time I see you. Right into the sunset, so.
Right.
Thank you for all your work together, a long time.
Yeah.
It's great, thank you for everything you've done, so. Uh, I want to come and give you some good news. It's always one of those, sometimes I know where to tell you. Now, you know, it's all the good news and where the, you know. Things are. Problem that, um, you like the highlights. I just want to remind you. Thank you both, I think Gary and I've been reporting for you. Talking about Donald, talking to you and also the. Testes that have achieved. That, for example. Up here, one, you have to be located by a, well, not really. Yeah, I never stayed on the fact that 45 was. Up again, so. That was my speculation. Anything with this, I'm only going to talk about today, is that. How bad can you be? Before I do that, I'm gonna let Gary give a little background on where they're at, on what it is. Uh, you got the. Uh, kind of came in to talk to us, uh, a little more about us, about the data. Part of that, we, we like. Covering the impact, right? Uh, what we're feeling, what we're hearing, but it's nice to have data, uh, to point out that it's not. Uh, this, uh, this is what happened, our civic territory, you might be surprised to hear how much happens since last time we were before. About $6,000 square miles of these areas, with fiber in the homes, having energy service. Part of that, of course, Beltrami County was our, our homecoming. Both of all fibers, uh, and the first county, Franklin State, October here, that was all fiber. And number one for being a better service, uh, Beltrami County. I haven't changed, so. Uh, I'll admit. And we've expanded across the areas, and these are. That areas are areas we built since then, and areas of. You'll see a lot of that effort, though, in Beltrami County, since we built, uh, those out 100%. For a lot of counties, uh, that are not in that situation. As we find out that we have data customers around the UMB camp. How many communities are moving? Our network extends, patterns extends all the way to New Orleans, so. Quite a ride, we're, you know, the median border. Growing, uh, portion of backup and. All that expansion has led to this. Right on the screen, awesome text of, which is why you have a printed copy in front of you, with all the fondest books. Uh, with, in either case, the whole point is that our cooperative, um, started building fiber technology in 2004. We settled on that technology, everything's from 2004. That's pretty early, follow the life cycle of technology and. On that technology, we didn't. Obviously, we did that really early, so it's. That let us do it, 10 years after that, 2014, it's 89. And across all those areas we've done. But how do you do that? I mean, what has it taken to do that? Um, stand ourselves, um, we were asked to present, um, Governor's broadband task force here a few months. On to their data production, because we don't, we didn't do it, because we didn't want to. I've been in those people that need it. That technology. But we stopped and we added up, and it's almost quarter of a billion dollars. Our modest cooperative has invested in. Yeah, via grants, uh, we're fortunate to be granted, even with the cooperative, nonprofit model, there are areas that are super tough to get through. Our, our lens, we give up service and, uh. And we need help, and you'll see a lot of those areas are identified. Not a grant program. Great, worth grants, but, of the quarter of a billion dollars, our members have invested. This is a loan, and this is a general fund, $228 million, so this is all human boarding, we've done on our own dime. Have that kind of service orientation. That you're willing to invest, and take on debt, and build out like you've been doing. Most of that are, um, implied, and again, I would refer you to your hand up, here, the one. I don't think to throw that up, it's not a brag, it is just to point out that we have invested in fiber technology. If you compare it to other wireless technologies, if you compare it to other copper technologies, that's in the right technology. That is the top. 100 grand, 100% fiber, 100% bear, that's not an easy thing. But we won't have to, uh, we are set very well, and so you can't even hardly basically capture the difference. Right? Don't worry about the numbers, but you can look at the bar and see it is. After the other technology. New technologies that are evolving, uh, faster, faster all the time. That line, for example, uh, has great applications, but they fail. Are we constructed? Obviously, they are very. Finally, talk about all the investment in advanced, high-end technologies like fiber. Um, it's because of what Dave's gonna talk about in one of the reports. Uh, it's, it's so good having a fiber network, you haven't leveraged it. Uh, before I go, I did want to introduce you. All, probably know many of these individuals, but I'm pretty happy because I'm retiring again this year. I'm the old retired. Has a lot of opportunities to, you know, take. I did introduce you to this. Our boys. We're just going in as well, so I, you know, I might get a little nervous about the entire evening, but I'm not nervous about it, it's just Paul Wenyun. I might wonder what I'm gonna do, or, oh, I do, that's why I'm. Uh, Paul Wenyun is gonna be in great shape. Out of that, and, uh. Uh, thank you very much for your time.
Uh, Gary, good luck in retirement, and keep playing crowns on LinkedIn.
Yeah, I miss that. So, what does this all mean for the impact it has on businesses? And what we kind of anticipated. True for, for our reasons, certainly as a person of all areas, but this report really starts to show what the impact can be. And has been, and so kind of filling. And sometimes I think about, because I've been investing in fiber for so long, I think we think about it almost like. I don't know, turning out like, just don't work. But in fact, most communities still are. Anywhere near what the impact or the infrastructure we have here. So what does this report do? What it does is try to examine rural communities that have access to high speed broadband, and also utilize it. And its impact on the economy compared to those that do not. And so, a lot of data, I think I sent the link in the PowerPoint, it certainly read the whole report, but I just want to highlight this for all. And this in general nationwide, rural communities that have access to high, high speed broadband and utilize it, have two hundred and thirteen percent higher growth, business growth rates. Have ten percent higher self-employment growth rates. What does that mean? Entrepreneurship, you know, businesses. Eighteen percent higher in per capita income growth than non-rural areas that do not have access. And finally, overall, forty-four percent higher in GDP growth. In areas that have access to what Gary just described. And that's really from an economic development standpoint, that's, that's big numbers. They have really big impact. Uh, here, and then generally in economic development. So, what's even more exciting about this is that, as Gary mentioned, they chose the highway, which is pretty darn cool. We didn't ask for it. It wasn't a marketing ploy on my part. I loved the idea though, because it does give value to us, and so it's an opportunity to. To look specifically at Bel Air County and what they found. And here's a couple of pieces of data, and then I'm gonna throw some, some information or some quotes up that I can read here. But the couple of pieces gives you an idea. One is on the left, you can see access to, to high speed broadband all the way down to fiber. What's interesting, if you look at Minnesota and the rest of the United States, and I pick on fiber alone, there is still, we have what, ninety-nine percent? That's almost a hundred, isn't it here? Almost a hundred percent fiber to the home at every place in all of Bel Air County. In the state of Minnesota, it's about a third, right? Just over a third. So they're still fighting and uphill battle to get fiber. Why fiber? Gary mentioned it. But how I talk about it as a non-techy guy, it's future-proof for us. Right? It's, it's not a current technology that's gonna change. This is a technology that continues to grow with, with the demand. So it's really a future-proofing fiber. The one on the right shows you business growth rates. And our county far exceeded both the state and national averages. And again, you can make a big chunk of that to the broadband, and the impact of programs. Have, if you look at simply business, total number of establishments, number of businesses. Love to take full credit. Can't take question. There's a couple quotes I just threw off that sort of kind of tells the story. And again, I really encourage you to read the, the specific section on Bel Air County. But, but Bel Air County stands out as a rural community helping to build prosperity for its residents by effectively utilizing and leveraging the fiber broadband and technology. Lomiggi stands as a powerful example of what's possible when a community comes together to invest in the future. With the right infrastructure, community partnerships, and innovative innovation, whole regions like Bel Air County are finding themselves on a path. That cool to hear about Bel Air County. That's a story I want to share. Our county and what we're capable of and what we're doing. Last thing I'll share is what this means. Talk a lot about utilization. The report talks about utilization. It's not just about having the technology, it's about utilizing it, right? And leveraging it for additional growth. Here's some things we've done. That, that, that have been really, from my perspective, leveraging the gigazone. One, in promoting the region. I go to sex like the conferences. These are the consultants that help companies locate, decide where to locate. Some of the first questions I hear about is profit. When you're in a myriad of a million of me talking to the same consultant, when I have something that separates us, it makes a difference. When I tell them our county is almost a hundred percent all fiber, it separates us. I get attention, right? And when that comes up. So that's one. Secondly, the launchpad. You've invested in that. Three-year development fund over the years, the ability to combine those resources, but also space and technology for Starbucks. And our launchpad has access to the gigazone, and entrepreneurs have access to the gigabit. Highway speeds right at our launchpad, which is powerful. North Star pitch competition. What is that? That's entrepreneurs who have a great idea for the community. And, and our business come and pitch to panel of judges and essentially win prizes, financial prizes. Big part of that is it's, it's connected up with. Uh, the gigazone and Paul Bunyan and their techs. And so, this is ways we leverage it, right? Over the, over the years that end up making the difference. Uh, and, and. Some of those economic development numbers. The last one, of course, is to when they relocate. Something we've talked about, our attempt to draw additional workers to our region. Paul Bunyan, major sponsor of that. In part, right now, if you move to our region from an outstate area or a home worker, you, you get access to six months, I believe, of free gigabit broadband. That's a huge. Home workers aren't gonna come to a place that doesn't have fiber. Been able to do that, we've got over three hundred families moved to our area because of that, so. Ultimately, you know, Gary's retiring. Big thank you to Paul Bunyan, right? This isn't something Peter Bwidge did, or, you know, this was a really an investment that members. And the board of fault and leadership of Paul Bunyan decided to invest in. Last thing I'll share with you is, what am I gonna do with this information, particularly this report? One is again differentiating us. So you're gonna see us pushing this all the time. Uh, externally about how, how we are leading. In the broadband and what that means. Business community, we're gonna promote the heck out of them. And of course, we'll continue to look for additional leverage opportunities. Take this information, make sure we shine a big spotlight on it. That, I'm sure Gary will answer questions if they have. Questions?
Questions for Dave or Gary? Yeah, Craig?
I just want to make sure that we point out and also acknowledge Steve Howard, who is retiring this year as well. He was the technical brains behind all this stuff way back when, and, and just, you know, I've known Steve for a long time, and, and he just, you know, they're. Paul Bunyan wouldn't be where it's at today without Steve, so shout out to him. So, thank you.
Great question. We are lucky to have him. He could have gotten anywhere, one of those guys, and he chose to work for us, and that's in large part because of the mission we have. It was all about the why of what we're doing.
Jim?
I think it was true. So, Gary. Do you know any updates about the A C P, or are you gonna have any time to pursue advocating for that?
I've been advocating for that. We're one of the most vocal in terms of A C P, and the most, one of the most aggressive trying to get it out there, right? Bringing it to the people that needed barriers, all those things, affordability of broadband is just as important as it being in the ground, right? And so, we have been along with our state and national trade and sales stages, working on that hard. There has been many starts and stops federally in terms of reauthorizing A C P. I think the latest is an assumption that it probably won't come back as it was called A C P. But what's also being stepped right now is a more broad universal service program. And within that program, and that's been around for decades, of course, A C P, which is fairly new. Within the universal service mechanism, they're hoping to reauthorize or have a similar kind of program in the, so we will continue to advocate for that. It is just critical that you deal with not just availability of broadband, but affordability of.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, at, at the national level, at NACO, it's something that we were working on as well, and, you know, trying to advocate for, for the A C P program. And, and how much of an impact it brings, you know, to your, our area. I know that, you know, we, we're dependent on it, you know, we rely on that, and it, it's been very helpful. So, I know that, you know, I'm trying to do, you know, what I can to. To bring awareness to that, and I just wanna, you know, thank you and your, and your board for your, your vision on, you know, bringing broadband to northern Minnesota. Um, you know, I. When I go out in the state and, and listen to, you know, other counties saying, you know, how lucky and fortunate we are, you know, not having an issue with, with broadband. Um, you know, it brings, you know, relief, um, and seeing how many people that, you know, don't have it, but, you know. It's good to see that you guys are working, you know, on, on, you know, greater Minnesota, so I wish you well in, in your retirement, and, and thank you.
Thank you for the partnership, buddy. Together with the leadership of Red Lake, to bring those efforts right to the folks that might need it, and that pay dividends. I mean, we really, you know, increased the take rate. Very meaningful people. And I think we had eight hundred and something leverage A C P. They did not reauthorize it, so. Super frustrating, but very grateful for the partnership.
Joe?
Uh, Gary, thank you for this information, and congrats on your retirement coming up here, so. This is great info. This is a symbol of pride for our community and area, and, I mean, it's true, people. Need high-speed internet to, you know, start their small business out of their house or garage or wherever, so. Yeah, I, but I do have a question. I know we talked about the fiber rock, the cable being future-proof, but it's still gotta have some kind of shelf life. Just curious what that is. Is that a hundred years, or what's, have we had to replace any at all, or what? Just talk about that for a minute.
It's a great question. I don't think anybody knows for sure. We've had fiber on the ground now, I would say forty years, in part of our network. And certainly in the industry, probably longer, to find examples. We're, we're quite confident this is going to be a three, four, five decade investment. And the beauty of that is, every day they're expanding capacity of the fiber that's already in your ground by just changing the electronics that hang on the end. So we'll always be investing or reinvesting, but hopefully primarily on the fibers on the end of those networks, or the electronics, I should say, on the end of those fiber networks. That's where the improvements come. The glass in the ground is, is good. But yeah, everything's going to have some kind of shelf life. We'll forever be augmenting, expanding, replacing, but we think this is a worthy investment, because it's, yeah, like I said, thirty, forty, fifty. As far as the glass in the ground.
Thank you. Yeah. Right, yeah, watch out for those. I used to do some work for Minnesota Broadband Coalition, some lobbying work down at the legislature, and we'd always, you know, look at Paul Bunyan as a, a prime example of what's going on, so. And I wouldn't be doing my job as a native of the Iron Range to mention that there's a tiny little town in I taska County called Bovie, Minnesota, that would love Paul Bunyan. There's any strings you can pull before you retire.
Appreciate that. A lot of our work is that direction for sure, because to your point, that's where there's still need. So, I would expect, I never say never on that one. We've hit a lot of the communities up one sixty-nine. As well as, you know, our primary focus has always been, however, to go to the rural areas where others won't go, so that's always been our focus. It's really our mission. Uh, but that's not to say we won't overbuild another, you know, on what serves community, it could stand to benefit them, which we have many examples of that here.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, see, Gary, on the map, and I don't know if it was just an oversight, but the southeastern corner, Dome Creek Castle Lake, the east side of Castle Lake itself, and that, that wasn't colored in. Is that just a, a coloring oversight, or on your. Hill, or is that not actually served by Paul Bunyan? Right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Variety of things going on there. We have worked with Leech Lake Tribal Government to serve some of those areas. Some of those, we're still waiting to have all the authorities given to us to move ahead and do those upgrades. They've been on the docket for a very long time. For a variety of reasons, not all of that has happened yet, so that, that is correct. That's hopefully a temporary thing, if we work through proper authorization and partnerships here to build out the rest of that, that corner. I can tell you, some of that is already now green-lighted, and we'll be building soon.
That's in my district, and so I don't like seeing the gap be in my area. So.
Have had for quite some time. Everybody, thanks for building that.
Okay.
But for a variety of reasons, we probably couldn't be able to or allowed to, but I think that's changing as we speak.
Great, thank you.
Richard, just congratulations on your retirement, and, and Dave, thanks for all your input over the years, and I look forward to hearing even more things. Thanks, guys. Shane? You're up. Okay. And we are running behind, so if there's any way that we could expedite your, I'm sorry to cutting you short, but.
I'll do the best I can.
Thank you.
I wouldn't say, I live about twenty miles from St. Paul, and I don't even have. Anyway.
You, you, we would love to have you. Come on up.
Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you for taking the time today. This is a, a problem about once a year to give a presentation, just on about the research out of the spill site out here. And I'm the site manager, and I represent. So this story begins back on August twentieth nineteen seventy-nine, when there was a pipeline rupture out in the county. I guess it's a tax war pipeline out near Highwood. And this is what it looked like in August event seventeen times, and the details of the spill are there. Up about seventy-five percent of the oil immediately, and then about twenty-five percent of the oil remained. That twenty-five percent keeps bringing people back again and again to study what happens when you leave oil, spill the oil in the ground. So really, the main goal of what we are doing there is just understanding what happens when oil is left in the ground. And the USGS began work there in nineteen eighty-three, and the science team, which is the USGS and other universities, some international universities. They continue to address questions and help society answer questions, and better understand big transport risks associated with spill control. So this is just an aerial view of what it looks like out there. The gray area, that's where there is spill oil pooled up on the water cable. Um, on top of the groundwater. The little, the little dots are wells that are out of the site. And we do most of our research on, on this part of the, the north oil pool, we call that. Um, and this is the pipeline right here, here. So this is just to give you a picture of what it looks like out there. Groundwater is generally flowing from the side toward this unnamed lake. And benzene is commonly measured at controlling spill site, the known carcinogen. And they look for stability of the benzene boom often as a way to express this. And the benzene boom at this site has been stable, other than that clear cut area, since about nineteen ninety-six. Um, we've detected some other things that aren't regulated compounds, but they are evidence of carbon from the oil, and we detect that at the edge of it. So, question is, how does an oil spill and oil has become a famous research site? Health, thought, and life gives you lemons, right, Sunday? And the knowledge gained at the Lomiggi research site really is used all over the world to inform petroleum. Keep your aspect, you can take a look at this, um, compared to. That part is what makes it, maybe one thing that Paul needs. So then a couple of science highlights. So all kinds of things that happen with spill oil. And one of those things is there. But so I don't know if anybody else is concerned, people. But our research team called Hawaii religion West. Part of our team, I mentioned, was Black. Benz is 122. The oil part of the dioxide, the oil is ready to kind of come off. It works really well with Bemidji. It's a particular player in Bemidji. So this is the new research. Measures, I think, men's. Sorry, some of the measures evaluated that method and on what. Summary, we all have seen, just a couple of pictures of what it looked like back in 1979. But we've come a long way. We have, you know, groups out there always learning, always collecting new data. And it continues to be a valuable place where we all gather to learn about petroleum that is spilled. Thank you for letting us continue to work out there and do your support with this agreement that you're part of.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate it. See you again. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Amy, do you think you have time? You're so good at abbreviating.
I'll back and I'm hoping to remember. So the, both of our presentation of. Copy of.
We do.
So I'm just going to open with, we were here back in February and we have the board to approve a charter for the wellness community. An alignment across the county and area has the goals and the mission statement and statements for the wellness for life community. Always brings us back to what our goals, our missions are. And that's that.
Good afternoon, Chairman Carlton and board members. Again, my name is Kelly Monarch and I actually work for County and got that as a volunteer. And so the first slide is the engagement calendar that we have among our community that is from connection with all the things that happen during the year. And the ones that matter for our, for our community is the wellness expo and then the freedom owners from October to November, the finances. So I'm going to skip ahead briefly and connect the financial workshop. So wellness expo is something that I brought back a while ago. It's pretty recent here. And I'm really passionate about it. Really excited about this concept. It's, it provides businesses to come to our campus and interview our employees. And it lets them promote their business and our employees can take away the different ideas and then also use them in their different departments and give them in their place. And this also is really such an event and it pays for itself. And it brings the funds that we bring in for this event are able to support the next year's expo in growth and offers more incentives for employees to exercise. And so the overall idea that is to help employees gain total wellness. And they can be physically, mentally and financially adequate. And which creates a charter for a workforce. It gives us the ability to retain employees and it provides a sense of community for us to stay and have the energy in our career. With that, I'll hop back to the financial workshop. So with the connections that we've created through the financial expo, we've had been able to host a couple of different conferences. One of the first one that we did for our financial workshop was the money basis. Mike Gelf and Aaron Keller, who wasn't able to be here, we sat down and decided that there's a lot of emphasis on future investment planning in retirement. And we decided that we need to start with basics and help employees understand where to start. So we did a seminar on the concept of difficulty and solid foundation. And then the next one is going to be on creating a budget. So employees can either bring their own number, but they can utilize the ones that we'll have. But they will be done so that they can create their own budget that will work well for themselves. And then our third final one, we're going to bring in, we're in financial and he's going to talk about the difference in investing and. That kind of in that show what you've been doing as well.
So we just, once I come back, we'll kind of do a little bit of a here and review with you guys to share about what we've been working on. Amy and I have been to all of the different departments who invited us to come and present as we've been trying to be really intentional about getting county engagement across the entire county department. And so it's been really fun and exciting to see multiple different departments participate in the events that we're having. Moving forward, we're going to continue with to present to individuals who are interested in having us. And we'll be inviting community members to do that with us as well. So with that, you guys have any questions for us?
No. That was awesome. Thank you, guys.
It worked.
I, I can tell you, I was at the, I went to the expo and it was really well done. So thank you. That was a great idea you had.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you. I, I think what we'll do is maybe add the administrators' report to the, so with that, is there any changes or questions about the upcoming agenda? Other than maybe adding the administrators' report to item 12A? 13A? 13A? Yep.
Well, I might.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
There's a consent agenda item on county 20.
That's just the road. It's the, the final payment for the, on it was the east side of the park.
Yeah.
For all that roadwork. It was a final payment. I mean, if you want to bring it up, you can. It's
That's fine.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it was just a final payment of, and it was all the, it had nothing to do with the, the new section where the septic goes. It was the east side. Yeah. Yep. So with that, all right? With that, then I will, we'll adjourn until 5 o'clock. Thank you.